Good evening. We're ready to get started. We'll call the Curriculum Committee of the Board meeting to order. Do we have any public comment this evening?
We have no comments at this time.
Wonderful. Okay, we're going to turn it over to Ms. Gregitis for our new business, starting with a presentation on our GAIN program in the district.
Thank you very much. Good evening. And right before that, Mrs. Willeczek would like to speak to you about the invitation that you all have at your places.
Good evening, everyone. Hopefully, in front of you, you see an invitation for this year's art show. So I am cordially inviting you next Tuesday evening, starting at 6 o'clock, to come and see our students' creative side in the LGI at PW. K-5 will be sharing or debuting their pieces from 6 o'clock until 7:00, and then we will have a secondary showing from 7:00 until 8:30. We're trying to stagger the groups a little bit so that we can make sure that we're social distancing. But our teachers are starting to set up all of these displays starting tomorrow. And so we will be working hard this week so that everything is ready to go for next week. This year's theme is shaping new perspectives, and we wanted to choose that as our theme because it helps to embrace a lot of the DEI initiatives that we've also been trying to incorporate with our students and with our professional development. So we are looking forward for you to show. And on the back also, you'll see a little bit of a summary of what the artwork that's displayed on the invitation is about. This is a piece that was done by a 7th grader and an 8th grader at the middle school. And they chose to specifically draw about the sumer tan butterfly, which on the outside is very well camouflaged, and you cannot see it in its surroundings. But when it opens up its wing, it's a whole different perspective. It's very beautiful. And so that was a really nice way to try to interpret our theme this year. So we hope to see you there next week. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out, and I'm happy to answer them for you. Thanks.
Thank you very much. So again, welcome to Curriculum Committee of the Board meeting this evening. Our agenda, we are going to talk about, as Ms. Clay said, GAIN this evening. You can go to the next slide, Drew. Thank you. We're going to talk about GAIN this evening. We are also going to get an update on our MAYAC, our Mid-Atlantic Equity Consortium Audit. And then we have two policies for your review this evening. So GAIN is a word. It's a Colonial School District word. Many of you are probably very familiar with RTII, the Term Response to Intervention and Instruction. So GAIN, as well as RTII, is a support process. And the goal is to improve our students' learning and their achievement using research-based interventions, using instruction matched to the specific need of the students. The basis of RTII, the premise, is that all children can learn. So in 2017-18, GAIN was implemented and launched in the Colonial School District after about two years of training, training with our administrative staff, training with our teachers, training with everyone. Our reading specialists went to the IU, and they were immersed in some good practices for assessment, progress monitoring, before we launched. So CSD added, not yet, Drew, Colonial added, an enrichment focus to our GAIN model or RTII model. And we felt that this was necessary because we, as well as many other districts, noticed that our students that were performing at the proficient or advanced level were not seeing the growth that some of our other populations were seeing with this interventions, with this model. So we also focused on our enrichment block so that those children that came in succeeding with our curriculum were also going to be growing and not just plateauing. So you will notice that we have an additional block called our enrichment block. Now, Drew, you can show us the triangle. The triangle is what you typically see within an RTII framework. It is a multi-tiered approach that is used, as I said, to help identify and support students. It focuses at the base of the triangle, the broadest part of the triangle, on Tier 1. And that talks about our Tier 1 instruction, or our core instruction in the Colonial School District. That's high-quality classroom instruction. It is also differentiated to meet the needs of our students, and it's monitored with assessments and screening. So with this Core 1, approximately 80% of our students should be able to achieve proficiency or reach goals that are established. However, there are some students that may not reach those expected targets or at different times of the year. So they would then move to that yellow block of the triangle called Tier 2. Again, Tier 2 is adding additional resources, interventions, and instruction. This is where your research-based activities take place. So if I'm struggling in the area of either language arts or math, I would move to a Tier 2 instruction and get research-based instruction based on my needs, specifically with my needs matched up with all of my other peers. If the Tier 2 instruction, and that's typically about 15% of the population, they then get the supports that they need. If I'm still struggling with my Tier 2 instruction, I then move to Tier 3. This is about 5% of our population. These children need more intensive, one-on-one, or very small-group interventions. Again, they are also research-based. The important thing to note here is that Tier 3 is in addition to Tier 2. Tier 2 is in addition to Tier 1. Nothing replaces each other. So Colonial, now you can go to the next one, adopted, as I said, the GAIN model in 1718. We are using a triangle, or we have used a triangle, to model our GAIN, growth, and intervention network. You will see there the same things that we just spoke about. You will see the Tier 1 instruction. You will see that that is our core, our general core curriculum. You will also see our Tier 2, which is targeted, Tier 3, more intensive, and again, focusing on that enrichment of the top of the diamond. Okay, so universal screenings. Universal screenings are completed in the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and the end of the year to drive our groupings of our students. So everything that we talk about within Tier 1, 2, and 3 is all based on data. So data drives all of our instructional decisions. You've heard that a million times. So this is exactly how. In ELA and math, those assessments are listed there. Then throughout, after we group them and get their universal assessments, we decide the instruction Tier 1 is working for them, or it is not. They may need Tier 2. They then get progress monitored all throughout, between the beginning-of-the-year assessments and moving to the middle-of-the-year assessments, and likewise, from the middle-of-the-year to the end-of-the-year assessments. Children are grouped and regrouped constantly. It is not a stagnant process. Once you are given Tier 2 instruction, you stay in Tier 2. You do not. It is very fluid and moved, and that's where the progress monitoring helps us. So we're going to talk more specifically about English Language Arts and math, but I wanted to start with an overview of what GAIN was, in case anybody didn't know. So does anybody have any questions about the structure or the format before we move on to the specifics?
Just a quick question. A quick question. So for Tier 2 and Tier 3, does that also mean that that's in, everyone in those tiers have an EIP?
It does not. This is not a special education support at all. This is supports for all students. There may be children in there with IEPs. Everyone gets to take advantage. No, 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 you're fine. Everyone gets to take advantage of the GAIN block. It's a scheduled block in all of our elementary buildings. And it doesn't matter if you have an IEP. You can be a student with L services or a regular general education student. It's for everyone. Sure?
How, so good.
How early in the beginning of the year do you start? How many weeks into the school year do you start with that first diagnostic?
That's a great question. So we start at our K-3s, the second week in, with our DIBELS assessments. So the DIBELS is an assessment we use in English Language Arts. I'm sorry, Rebecca, if I'm taking any of your thunder. We start that immediately, and the teachers also begin to start BASSing with the Benchmark Assessment System from Fanta-Simpinell. And then our Lincoln assessment soon come after. So it may seem like we do a lot of assessing in the beginning of the year, but that is the purpose that we do this for.
Sorry, and you're saying 15% of the students require the Tier 2 intervention. The other 75% also have a GAIN block, though, where they're doing the same things?
Absolutely. So everyone goes to their GAIN block, depending on what their need is. So if Tier 1 instruction is working for you, you will still get grouped by your need. You may be a proficient or advanced student. But then we look a little bit deeper at that data and say, "We're going to push you further within your Tier 1 instruction and go a little bit deeper with concepts that you may not be exposed to yet. But we're going to send you to advancement so that you try to grow further." Does that make sense? Is that what you were asking? Any other questions before we hear from our guests? All right, Mr. Pasetti, you want to start with English Language Arts?
Certainly. Thank you, Mrs. Gregitis. So I wanted to make sure that we were making some sense of the geometries we were talking about with our triangles and our diamonds and whatnot. So we've invited this evening Ms. Rebecca Caslow, who's down here to my left. She is one of our amazing reading specialists here at the 4-5 Center. So she'll be speaking on behalf of K-5 to go through some of the programming for English Language Arts specifically, so what each of those tiers will look like. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Rebecca.
Thank you. So looking first, the focus of GAIN. So at K-3, and again, it's kind of fluid. We start really looking at the foundational literacy skills, that letter naming, the sounds, phonemic awareness. Oh, Mr. Bowley, could you go to the next slide?
Certainly.
Thank you. Those very early foundational reading skills. Then they move up to the basic comprehension, that very basic retell, the story elements, character setting, write-there types of questions. Then they move up to some little bit higher comprehension and analysis, where the kids are starting to dig a little bit deeper with some inferencing, analyzing the text, answering some questions, where they then move into some written response to text. At the K-3 level, it's more just that open-ended, constructed response, where it's a question, they need to, you know, answer it. There's some tech, you know, find like one piece of text evidence to support that. And that's kind of where they end in 3rd grade. And then when they transition to 4 or 5, we are still working on those written responses to text, but it's more in the form of a text-dependent question or a text-dependent analysis. Whether a short, the text-dependent question is a little bit shorter. The text-dependent analysis is a full-blown five-paragraph essay, where the kids really have to analyze a pretty complex prompt and then find, come up with thesis statements, have that five-paragraph structure, find evidence that supports it, explain it, and really dig deep into that analysis piece. It really pushes these kids far. So we work on that, and then higher-level comprehension with inferencing, drawing conclusions, things of that nature. So that's where our focus is for GAIN in the tiers. And again, that will vary based on Tier 1, that core instruction, continuing and extending it. Tier 2 and Tier 3, we're going to drill back more basic to find those holes and those gaps that need to be closed for those learners that need it. And in order to do that, we look at some of these indicators of success. We look at these different assessments, a little bit that Ms. Gregitis spoke about earlier. K-3, we use various formative checks, running records, and DIBELS, which they get that assessment right in the fall. But there are some subtests that more deeply address and assess specific skill sets. So the teachers use those. They could use them weekly, bi-weekly, all throughout the GAIN periods. And as mentioned, that helps with the fluidity of the grouping of staying in tiers, switching tiers, things like that. For 5, we also have formative checks, running records, access to those DIBELS subtests. And there are some other programs that we also use that have formative assessments, such as corrective reading and keyword vocabulary. Corrective reading really works with fluency, which is what we're doing in like the Tier 2. And keyword vocabulary is working on some of those word attack skills. So those are some of the assessment measures that we use in the various tiers. And then moving on to the various resources that are used. This is just in general for K-5, because there's a lot of similarity into the available resources. In Tier 1, they're using Storyworks, which is fantastic. It's a magazine. And it comes out monthly, and there are fantastic articles and stories that the kids really get engaged in. It has all different genres. There's dramas, fiction, nonfiction, comparative texts, really great interactive lessons there. Different focus read-alows that teachers choose, or selected texts to use, whatever they need to target for each specific tier. The teachers are very selective about that to make sure they're hitting the standards that they are supposed to be addressing and the needs that they're addressing at those tiers. There's also OCAPY and Lexia. Tier 2, there is Rise and Rise Up. It is a reading comprehension resource. Again, very targeted. They are short texts, and they are leveled. So the kids are getting that at their instructional level. And there are very specific skills for each lesson that they are working on. So again, very easy to use a resource like that to address the gaps that these, some of these students might have. 95% Phonics is new this year. Again, working for more of those early literacy skills that students might need. Reading Mastery is more of a basic comprehension resource that we have access to. And I also mentioned corrective reading and keyword vocabulary as well, along with Lexia, which is just a fantastic reading program that, at the start of the year, the kids do take a placement assessment on. And it puts them in the level that they need, and it tackles all areas of reading, fluency, those basic literacy skills, vocabulary, comprehension, everything. And the kids move through it. They love it, kind of like games almost. But again, it is so specific to what the individual child needs, and they move through their levels with that. And in Tier 3, we have Reading Mastery and 95% Phonics. So, any questions?
And I think one of the things to add there, too, is we're constantly iterating in terms of finding additional resources or refining the resources we currently have. Our reading teams work tirelessly to identify what the best practices are going to be and identify which of the components in each of these resources are best strategically deployed to make sure that those groupings are getting what they need. So it's very student-centered.
Are these resources things that the kids can do at home as well? Or is it specifically just in that GAIN block?
Most of these are just the GAIN block, but I know Lexia is one that the kids have access to through Clever. They can do that at home whenever they please.
And there are also some of those Tier 1 interventions as well. Or not interventions, but enrichment opportunities. Storyworks is a great example of something that many students do, put in their backpacks, bring home, share with the family. So there are definitely opportunities for extension there as well.
And that's purposely designed, especially in the Tier 1, to have those at-home measures. But remember, with Tier 2 and Tier 3, it's a explicit systematic instruction that we don't want to necessarily leave to the children doing on their own, because there's nobody telling them they're not doing it correctly.
So outside of the Tier 1 programs, the rest of them, outside of Lexia, let me be more specific. Are any of the other programs, online adaptive learning programs, are they all teacher-directed?
You can go ahead.
They're all teacher-directed.
The question, this is more of a broader question. And we've talked briefly about the science of reading before, but this initiative started in 1718. I feel like the science of reading has become much more relevant in more recent years. How has, or in what ways, has GAIN shifted to align more with the science of reading?
Yeah, so that is a great question. When we started with this launch in 1718, we did go to the IU, as I said, for a lot of our training with many of our literacy teams. So we got two years really in before everything shut down. So this is the first year we have been back with GAIN, but we are looking at additional opportunities for not only our literacy team, but also our teachers to attend more training. We started with the letters training with our literacy teams. But again, it'd be great to get more of our teachers back to some of these workshops.
One other just follow-up question, pandemic-based. Have you noticed a trend of, say, 3rd graders? And I heard you say, you know, 3rd graders for DIBELS will take like an oral reading fluency usually. Like, that's usually their progress monitoring. Have you noticed that there is more of a gap now than, you know, two years ago with foundational skills? Like, for example, how are you able to address the early literacy skills that might be missing? How is that working if you're with the progress monitoring more so? If that makes sense?
Yep, that makes sense to me. So with GAIN, the beauty of it is we're not prescribing instruction based on where anybody should be on a continuum. We're basing it on what the students need at that very moment. When you're asking about our data, we looked at our benchmark data for DIBELS from this year and looked at it in previous two, three years back. We are not seeing much of a difference, and those have even been recouped by the middle of the year. So we're anxiously awaiting our end-of-the-year data.
Okay. But you have a system for if Sharon is a 3rd grader, and I have these gaps, you have some sort of progress monitoring tool that brings me back beyond, besides Lexia, which I know will do that diagnostic on its own, but...
So DIBELS for progress monitoring, it's not about a grade level?
It'll go back on the subtest.
Exactly. So you'd get that instructional level where they're being instructed on, and that's the progress monitoring you use based on that subtest?
Awesome. Thanks.
Sure.
One additional question. When we talk about our Tier 2s, and those are when students start having that one-to-one work? That's when the reading specialists come in? Is that when they move to the small group with the reading specialist? Or is that just a leveled approach where they go? With certain students, where a certain group go to different teachers?
So if we're talking about ELA, yes, the most highly qualified teachers work with the neediest students. So the more intensive that requirement is for the intervention, that's where our reading specialists do come into play. Or we have instructional aides that are trained and go to training so that they can also do that.
And how often do the reading specialists connect with the classroom teacher to look at that data and make decisions?
They do that all the time, but they use their PLT times especially to do that. But oftentimes, it is not at PLTs. It's daily. It could be in the hallways. It could be in the office. It could be meetings, emails, plans, all of it.
I would imagine that since it's so fluid, like you could have a kid that just like, oh, they have that aha moment, and then boom, they're moving.
They're the ones we love, Chris. Yes. That is the case. And again, it is, nobody is ever locked into that tier or even that group. It could be they're still in Tier 2, but they may be doing well. And as you said, it just clicked with that explicit instruction, and then they move up to the next group, and the next group, and the next group. Anything else for ELA?
How often do, per year, do you find the groups get reshuffled, really?
So we do the major reshuffling three times a year. But that progress monitoring is used to make those interim changes, so that they're not in there all three times.
Sorry, one other question. I know you said that the Tier 1, well, the smallest tier is more one-on-one than anything?
Tier 3.
Tier 3, sorry. So your Tier 2 is that, like, how many students would you have at most in a group that's like Tier 2?
Yep. So our reading specialists that we spoke about will go no more than six in a group. And then as the tiers go up or down, the Tier 3, the most intensive, sometimes we have one-on-one, sometimes, but usually no more than three in a group if they have that same deficit.
Not so much a question, but just a comment. My son was in, I guess, about a Tier 2 for reading. And then tested out, and back in, so Tier 1. But then during one of those progress monitoring meetings, him and his teacher determined he needed more help with his writing, and so moved back. So I do appreciate the fluidity of it, you know, when you identify what the students' needs are, moving them in and out of those groups, and them not being stagnant. So that was good.
That's great.
So when you do that, I mean, kids are intuitive, but is there any, just like, do the kids, like, think about, like, I'm not as smart as that group over there? Or like, how does that?
That's a great question. And we get often that question in the beginning of the year because we do send out parent communication. It does not tell you what tier, per se, that your child is working on. But we talked about the science of reading earlier. It goes through all the different parts of reading and math. When we get to math, Mr. Merk's probably feeling a little left out right now. But we do send home parent communication, and we tell the parent exactly what skill their child is working on. And as we talked about, it's the whole grade level moving at the same time. So when it's, let's say, 130 is the GAIN block, everyone is out in the hallway, shuffling about, going to the different rooms. Then nobody really picks up on, everybody just knows it's GAIN. I go to a different teacher. Sure. All right, Mr. Merk, let's hear a little bit about math.
All the questions have been answered, right?
No, lucky you.
So for math, you'll see parallels in terms of process, but obviously, the content's different. For grade-level focus in K-5, you'll see in K-3, at the beginning of K-3, there's a lot of focus on number sense and place value. That's critical to developing students' skills in mathematics. Then, as you move up, as the students move up in the 3rd grade, it'll evolve into fluency and accuracy with basic facts, followed by computation in all four operations. Once the students get up into grades 4 and 5, the focus then still remains on number sense and whole number computation, but then they start to drill down into students' understanding of fractions. And then from there, they'll continue to focus on that number sense, because number sense, place value, those topics are usually what, kind of, at the beginning, hold some students back in mathematics. So that's why it's always going to be a continued focus throughout all five-grade levels. But they'll end up, you know, looking at problem solving and open-ended tasks before finishing 5th grade. Our indicators of success in K-3 and 4-5, we see some similarities. Each of the grade levels will look at formative checks, unit assessments, and benchmark data. The only exception there is K-3, we do have a Bridges assessment that assists our teachers in identifying who's, you know, which students still need to focus in some areas. Resources for GAIN, you'll see the same resources listed in each of the tiers. And that's because most of the resources we get for mathematics can be, is adapted for the student and can be differentiated. And it's ones that, when I say adapted, that, you know, it can involve with the student as they're working within the programs. But you'll see one we recently spoke about, the Greg Tang Lessons and Resources, teacher-created activities, open-middle website extension activities, DreamBox, DreamBox Assigned Focus, and then iXL Diagnostic and Learning. The dream, where you see DreamBox listed, that's primarily K-3. And iXL is for grades 4 and 5. Similar resources in Tier 2, we have things that are in addition, are Bridges and the teacher-created scaffold lessons. And finally, in Tier 3, we have students working in Bridges, DreamBox Assigned Focus, and intensive skill focus. So those are, that's an overview of mathematics and GAIN. Any questions on those?
I have a question, specifically around English language learners and math interventions or enrichment materials. Do any of the programs, the online, or what strategies or accommodations, or not accommodations, modifications do we use in support of our ELs, specifically around language? So, you know, if I'm a native Spanish speaker, I may know the math content. I might not be able to access it just simply because of the language. So what do we have in place to support our ELs?
So where we can, where we have the ability to translate, we will provide that translation within the program.
Sorry. Do any of these programs have an adaptation within it? Like, I know Lexia, you can program to accommodate where the student's home language is. Do any of the math programs have that?
I'd have to double-check what the extent of the translation is. But it could be less, it could be sound. But I'll get, I can get back to you on that.
First, thank you.
And I could piggyback on that as well. When we talked about our reading specialists, we do, whenever, when it is at GAIN time, at each grade level, we use all the teacher support that we can. That could be including our L teachers who work with a group. If they have a small group of students and there's some Ls in there, they would go to the training and use the math lessons designed for that because we do give them our PSYOP protocols. They're trained in that to give them a little bit more support in that way.
Two of the GAIN programs we have for math are online programs, DreamBox and iXL. When moving students to GAIN, what percentage of that time, 45 minutes, hour, how long GAIN is, is spent with students actually online doing independent work through the computer programs as opposed to one-to-one direct instruction with teachers?
It depends on the focus for that week or that time period. Also, when they're differentiating the activities within those time periods, then it could have some students on those programs while working individually with others.
And in the midst, and with doing that, are students getting the recommended minutes on the program? Or I guess maybe over the course of the week or within that period, are they getting the recommended minutes to show the progress as recommended by the program itself?
Yeah.
We do know that we have more resources for ELA, and that's typical in many school districts. We have been working and are going to continue to work, right, Mr. Merk? We've been looking at assessments that we're using. DIBELS does have a math assessment. It is, again, just a universal screener. That's just going to give us a better idea if a student is struggling with those foundational skills. skills. And we are also building up more resources for math. Everybody met Mr. Tang at our last CCOB meeting. So as we go through the year, this was our year back to gain, we are continuing to build up those resources based on our students' needs.
One last question.
Sure.
The, you mentioned that we started gain in?
2017, 18 school year.
2017, 18. If we would attract the original students that went in gain, either K-2, somewhere between K and Three, and we look at where they are now in the middle school, have we seen, or have we done any work to kind of track the initial supports of gain, accounting for the pandemic years and interruption due to the pandemic, to see if there's been any impact on their academics at the middle school? Because I know we're still working on our middle school math scores, so thinking specifically about that and the gain program that we implemented, has it demonstrated, or has it shown us the results that we wanted? Or how do we track? I know we're working on our math middle scores. So how do we track to see that the gain that cohort of students that started in 17, 18, what is their outcomes in their math now at the middle school? They should be about middle school at this point.
So where the majority of the tracking does come in is when, so at Tier Three, we get that very intensive instruction. If a student is still struggling after Tier Three, they could be referred to for the Child Study Team. If they do get an evaluation, the psychologists go very far back with our gain RTI model, our intervention model. So that would be the tracking system we have in place. We do not, but we could look into probably with Linkit to actually track all the way through for our Tier One and Twos as well. But right now, our tracking does just go with our special ed identification process.
When the, I'm sure it's a stupid question. When the students come back from the gain group back to their primary teacher, what sort of access do they have to the kind of the data, the results of what they've been doing in their gain groups? They're struggling with this, they're doing this, so that they can kind of compound the benefits they're getting from gain in their regular instruction? Is there some sort of flow or is it kind of they see the results in the test board?
For the teachers, you mean?
Yes.
So they have that PLT time to discuss that. They also have access to all the progress monitoring of their individual students, no matter which teacher they do see. So they work on that. And as I said earlier, they, a lot of times, it's just those informal conversations. The reading specialists or the L teachers or special education teachers like to celebrate those successes. So it may just be a quick, hey, did you see how well Rosemary's doing? She's really improving on her fluency or her accuracy. So they do have access. A lot of students also track their own progress monitoring, so they will come back to the classroom bragging about their successes too.
Sorry, I have a question. From a teaching standpoint, when you have these kids in these groups, like, how much time is a teacher also taking, administrating the progress that the kids are making? Do you know what I mean? Like, if they have to record, like, what's going on, how much time is that?
Progress monitoring? Most of our classroom teachers are working with our Tier One students. Some of them are working with their Tier Two students. The reading specialists would be the ones, progress monitoring those students on the subtests. And then now everything is digital and they put it into the DIBELS, well, it's now called the Amplify Platform. But, and so that is all at their fingertips on the computer.
And then how about for the math?
So same idea. The math is done by our gain interventionists in some of our Title I buildings. And as we were just talking about the assessments, we don't have very much for progress monitoring. Teachers, classroom teachers are using their own unit assessments that they give, and that is a good indicator on whether or not the kids are still struggling in the areas that they did. Are we good to move on? All right, Mr. James is going to talk to us a little bit about the audit. Thank you, Rebecca.
Good evening, everyone. So we're going to talk a little bit about the Mid-Atlantic Equity Consortium Audit. We started this process really last year and discussing the audit that we will be conducting for the 21, I mean, 22, 23, 21, 22 school year. And we were scheduled to do our audit beginning in January. We sent our audit out to our solicitors once we received the MOU and the scope of work from MAAC, which is the Mid-Atlantic Equity Consortium. And upon their revision of the documents, they had some recommendations. They wanted to make sure the district was in a correct place in terms of the language that was being utilized, concerns about the scope of the work and the charges, the ownership of the intellectual property and how that information would be backed up, what were the legal jurisdictions? Because MAAC is based in Maryland as versus us here in Pennsylvania, and exactly what was the MAAC. So once we got that information back, we sent that, our solicitors provided that information, and the information went back to MAAC where it currently stands now for their review. And I consulted with Dr. Christian, and we kind of made a determination that we weren't going to be able to get the audit out in enough time for this period because that audit would have really needed to start in early February. And so since the information from our solicitors, there were some concerns, some questions that they wanted to review, we had to send that back to MAAC. But I wanted to review exactly what the Mid-Atlantic Equity Consortium is for those who are not aware of it. So MAAC was actually founded in 1992 as a nonprofit educational, dedicated to increasing access to higher education, higher quality education for culturally, linguistically, and economically diverse learners. Currently, MAAC is comprised of 15 states in the East and also includes Puerto Rico. MAAC is funded by the Department of Education. So what happened was when P, Pennsylvania Department of Education rolled out of its equitable practices hubs, they recommended the MAAC audit tool for districts to begin to look into, to do some introspective work in determining where they stand on terms of equity throughout the district. And in fact, we utilized the portion of this MAAC tool in April of 2021 with the teacher behaviors portion of the tool. We wrote out to our two teachers to help us shape our professional development for the 21, 22 school year. So what does the audit do for us? The audit tool critically examines our policies, programs, and practices that directly or indirectly impact students relative to their race, ethnicity, gender, national origin, language, disability, age, sexual orientation, sexual identity, religion, or other socio-cultural significant factors. And the three components of this tool are the criteria for equitable school, the criteria for equitable classrooms, and the teacher behaviors, which I say we extrapolated a portion of that tool last year to survey our teachers. The tool is really designed to help develop a more concrete understanding of what it means to be and what it means to practice equity in school districts, as well as to reflect whether current school policies, practices, and procedures are in fact equitable. So how is this audit conducted? So what happens is each building will conduct their own individual audit. The teams will be comprised of 10 to 15 members, including teachers, building administration staff, caregivers, and in case of a high school, there will be some high school students selected. And we were already in preparation for that, so our building principals had already selected teams for this school year. So we're hoping to utilize the same members of that team. There may be some transition with retirements, parents that may have students that were maybe particularly in the four or five that now moved to the middle, so it may be more relevant to them for them to participate in the middle school. Then when those individuals on the team, they will take the audit independently of, with themselves. And then they will come together as a group and develop consensus. So an example would be a question, do school assemblies, special programs, and speakers reflect the diverse nature of the school and/or larger community? And the frame that you would, you would describe, whether it was latent, emergent, established, or advanced? So I might say, Gerald James says, I think we are latent at this stage, but we would, that would take my individual, my individual recommendation. We would take that to the, to our consensus group where we would have to come together and submit one answer for each school building. So what that does is allow us to audit the schools individually for specificity for the school, and then we will look at it as a whole throughout the district for district where our data. So those, obviously, that timeframe can be longer because, again, depending on how long it takes you to develop consensus as a group will be the determining factor for how long your team is really meeting together. So the services that MAAC will be providing for us is the initial training and implementation of the MAAC audit tool. They will provide coaching and ongoing professional development with our district leaders. They will provide the analysis and the data collection through Qualtrics, and then they will facilitate the leadership meetings for recommendations and strategic planning. And the cost of this service is free. I repeat that, the cost of this service is free. This is being funded through the Department of Education and the Center for Equity. It's very important, though, that we conduct this audit prior to the end of the 22 school year, 22 fiscal year for them, which is in December, because that is the scope in which their grant is funded through. While they don't have any concerns about being, receiving another grant cycle, we want to make sure that we are under this grant cycle and complete this audit by the end of this school year. So I met with MAAC team members this morning. We will again be reconvening as a tentative date of July 6 to determine our scheduling dates for September. And the audit will again run through, we have a tentative outline, so it will be completed somewhere in the early December range to give us enough time. We will not discuss this at the April meeting, but we will discuss it again at the May DEI meeting, which is in May 25. So with that, are there any questions regarding the audit?
Thanks, Mr. James. I have one question. Do we, or do you, I guess I should say, do you think that there's going to be many false positives results doing this in September when the school year is just beginning? As opposed to, and I know we're trying to make the December 2022, I'm just thinking about how many false positives are we going to have as a result of the audit, doing it at the very beginning of the school year?
I think that, I think that's what I mean, the mix of the good, the way that the teams will be structured, that we will have, you have to develop consensus. So if it's individuals that are on your team that may not know as much information, that's where the team will come into play because remember, you are submitting it for one school. So I think that that will help alleviate some of that. And that was one of the reasons why we didn't put it out as a survey, because really it can be based on your own individual knowledge and that may be very limited.
Could you elaborate on the format of the results? Are we basically going to get like a stoplight, like red, green? Or are we going to get, when we get the results of the audit, what are we going to do with it? Or what's it going to look like and what are we going to do with it?
So what happens when we get the results from the audit, that's what the MAAC team will kind of give us some recommendations. And then we will sit together as a kind of a leadership team and kind of develop a strategic plan for what those results yielded and what are, what we should do moving forward in terms of what we're doing well, areas of improvement. So that's what we will do, that's the kind of developmental phase after we receive the audits, that we see the results from Qualtrics.
I have two questions. I heard, I think that's Rine. I heard you say about 15 or so per building for the team, is that correct?
So it's 10 to 15, and obviously the number is a little bit different because I think that the middle school and high school may need a few more.
Sure.
15 members. We had started with 10 was the recommendation by MAAC, 10-member teams, but we may need to increase that because of the size really for the four or five, the middle and the high school.
Okay, so.
To have a good reflection of individuals.
All right, so just in terms of the implementation or the framework, just help me to understand, so the 10 to 15 folks who are part of the process, are there opportunities for additional focus groups outside of that? And then to what degree are family focus groups involved, are community focus groups involved? And, I'll start with that, please.
So I think that that's what kind of what the audit may yield, is that we may need to do a better job of communicating with four focus groups. So I think that that's, in terms of just the audit itself, it won't have individualized in other focus groups relative to the audit, but that may be some of the results that we get out of that, that we may need to have more focus groups so that we can have more input from community stakeholders.
So families such as mine who don't have kids necessarily in the school district, would there be an opportunity for members like us to give input or invoice onto like perception, perception data around?
So I think that that's one of the things we want to do is develop a belonging in a survey as well as for all members of our community because remember, we're only taking really a small population of our entire district. But I think that that's one of the things that we.
It's really narrow in other words right now. Okay.
So we do want to expand on that and develop a broader tool, more, probably more survey style for all of our members of our community.
Okay.
Can you speak a little bit more about how we, because you said each person on the team will take the survey independently? And at the middle school, at least at the high school level, potentially at the middle school also, there might be students involved in taking the survey?
Yes.
So when we talk about building consensus amongst the group, so you have teachers, administrators, caregivers, and students. When we all sit together, when they all sit together to build consensus, how do we ensure that student voices are being heard? Same thing with caregivers, which Sharon was mentioning. How do we make sure that their voice is being heard? What is that process to coming to consensus and coming to a determination that we're emerging our, I don't know what the bottom tier was. But how do we get to that consensus? How do we make sure that all voices are heard and taken into consideration in that space?
I don't think that's really, that'll, that'll be really from us to kind of set that, those guidelines that when we're in this space, that we're in this space unified collectively, that no one voices over the other. That's what our determining fact, that's what we need to do is really come together. And granted, there may be some students, students may not have all the information in terms of, and neither maybe not the caregivers either, in terms of policy and things like that, that they may just not know. So we definitely don't want to overshadow students' voices because that's the reason why we're asking students to come into that. And maybe that's something that we may want to think about, developing just a student group to do the survey on their own and they can come to consensus together.
Yeah, I'm thinking about putting all these different groups in the same room, positional hierarchy in terms of equity of voice, even from like a teacher standpoint to an administrator standpoint, being able to, and I'm sure this goes as part of the training and the agreements or norms about having equity of voice and everybody's voice being equal in the space, but also making sure that it's a safe space so that a teacher can comfortably provide critical feedback to the environment that they work in or that students feel comfortable, and parents as well, feel comfortable providing that feedback. And just thinking about how can we do that in that way? My other question is, in terms of the survey, what space or what input do we have on what the survey questions are? Do we provide like overviews of areas we'd like to look at or they just give us a whole thing and we have to do the entire survey?
So the form is, and I'm glad, two things. And one, I'll go back because I think you brought up something very important about establishing those norms, those norms, and the same way we're kind of talking about where we're, those norms in agreements now with courageous conversations with our educators, those are the same things we would establish when we had these groups. In terms of the questions, the survey, the audit tool is already done. What I have asked MAAC is, and they have asked us, is to go through that survey tool and look at questions that may not be relevant to our district. Also look at questions that, because when this tool came out in 2021, they developed questions that were specifically designed for COVID-19. And so also look at those questions and say, well, maybe it's not relevant to COVID-19, but it may be relevant to our digital learners or our technology, how we use technology in the classroom. So we will have some input in some of the questions that we will pull out there, and we did, I did speak with them about the ability to be able to input questions that may be really colonial centered and we really want to know the answers to.
I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead. Okay. The questions for the, for the survey in terms of balancing subjective versus objective, is it balanced?
I think that the questions are, the questions are designed to really, based on what you would know from the district. There are some leading questions, I believe. There are some questions that I think that we have, you have to, that's why the consensus is good, because questions that may state like all of our staff, but we know that there's no all, that can never be really 100% knowledge of that. So I think that there's a good mix of both of those things.
And then I have a second question in regards to kind of follow-up from Jamina in regards to MAEC. I'm having a hard time with acronyms today, as you can see. In terms of the services that they will provide, will they provide a service to recommend some strategy similar to what Jamina was offering? In terms of the strategy and how we divide the group to make sure that?
That's the last part of the process where they provide the most hours. Roughly about 20 hours of their time will be dedicated to the analysis, the recommendation, and the strategic planning.
No, I meant, I'm sorry, in services, I'm talking about the strategy and how to make sure that all voices are heard.
Oh, that's a part of the training. Yeah, that's a part of the initial training.
Okay.
We'll send out the link that has a copy of the instrument as well.
And you can pull up a little, Drew, if you clip on that link right there, there is a brief overview of the audit right there on the bottom. Mid-Atlantic Equity, right there. Oh, maybe because you're pulling it. But I can make sure that you have a copy of the audit tool. Yeah.
As.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
As part of the results, do we get access to baseline data so we can compare and contrast to other districts of similar size or break down? Or do we can compare what's normal?
We would probably, that probably would only work in districts that you utilize the MAEC audit tool. I can ask them because that's one of the things that we talked about in terms of who has the ownership to the intellectual property of the data. So we can certainly ask MAEC if they have comparable districts relative to ours that we can compare data for.
Any more questions from the board? Okay, let's move on to policy review. Thank you, Gerald, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. We do have two policies to review this evening. They are pretty easy to review with you. They are currently two policies that we have. They are just going to be new titles and language, replacing the versions from 1970. This is, we are replacing them with PSBA's language. And again, they are recommended. The first policy, Policy 803, is about our school calendar. Basically just says, as you are all well aware, we do have an annual school calendar. The board determines the hours within the sessions along with our state laws and regulations. It typically consists of a minimum of 180 days as our does. The board has the right to alter the calendar and the superintendent prepares it annually and presents it to you for your consideration. That is Policy 803. Any questions on that? Great. And then the next policy is 804. Again, new title, new language, recommended from PSBA to replace the old Policy 804. And this just speaks about our school day. Just that the typical school day for instruction shall be in accordance with the law, regulations, and board policy and that the board establishes the time for the daily sessions of our schools and the superintendent has the authority to close, delay, or dismiss schools for emergency reasons to protect and the health and safety of our students. Any questions on those?
I have a question that may, may or may not even, it's not related to the process of the policy, but to one of the policies themselves. What is the process that we use as a district to determine holidays for, within the 180 days? Or I'm sorry, outside the 180 days. How do we determine the holidays that we're setting for our calendar?
I think it's just been a, probably a year-to-year traditional approach. And so we're certainly open to any discussion of that. And I believe it's going to be a topic on our next Community Relations and Student Life meeting.
Yeah, okay. Just, okay, thank you.
It's, there's always a challenge. You have to be, and we need to be obviously respectful of all holidays as much as possible. We have to have the school year finished by June 30. And we have to have 900 hours of instruction for our kindergarteners, 990 for our first through 12th grades, and 180 days. So, but I think it's been a, it's certainly been a topic in many districts, not just this year, but over the past few years.
Thank you, Ms. Gregitas.
Sure. Also, I did want to let you know, Ms. Marino, that Mr. Merk was multitasking and he did get me some information on the L support that we do have within DreamBox and iXL. They do have the translations in Spanish with Spanish-speaking teachers. If they are designated by the teacher to turn them on. It doesn't look like they have many other languages, but we can touch base with them about that. And they also have adjustable readability levels and audio for students as well.
I think that's great. I think it's best practice to have conversations with students, depending on their age and their families, on what is the best approach that we take when we're doing that with any of these programs? So many that there are.
Without a doubt.
Sorry. Yeah, well, yeah, the home, obviously the home language survey would be one indicator, but depending on what level an EL student is, like if I'm, you know, a newcomer, then yes, that makes sense.
Exactly.
If I'm a four or five, it doesn't make sense. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
All we have, if nobody else has any other questions.
Just to point out, I really like the new Policy 804 because the last paragraph says the superintendent or designee can develop the rules for snow days.
Mrs. Merk, we just heard it's going to be in the community.
You all deputize if you're sitting on this.
Does that mean they have to get up?
4:00 AM calls will be shared.
Do they have to get up at 4:00 AM and drive around?
They do, no, I'll, I'll still do that. They just have to have their phones on, which they all already do, so. I think we're out of the woods, although we're getting a little bit of rain.
Okay, if there's no more comments on the policy review, do we have any public comment that's coming?
It looks like we have one. Please state your full name and place of residence.
Hi, this is Claudia. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, this is Claudia Ing Plymouth Meeting. I just had two questions. The first one was regarding the gain. I know we talked about tier one and tier two. I'm just reviewing one of my child's gain sheets that was rolled out to the parent beginning of the year. And on there, I'm not seeing anything about which tier my child is in. Is that something, am I missing something? Or who would I speak to about knowing which tier my daughter's in?
Hi, how are you? It's Rosemarie Gregitas. We did speak about that. We do just keep the language focused on the skill. And I believe at the bottom of that sheet, it should tell you exactly who you should contact, either the literacy team at your child's building and of course your child's classroom teacher first and foremost, because they do know exactly.
Fantastic, thank you. My second question has to do with the equity audit. So my question is when, if and when the surveys are rolled out to the students, will the parents be given the opportunity to review the questions beforehand and also given the option to opt out?
Yes, so the, the equity audit tool, the students will, the parents can get a copy of the equity audit tool for review. And certainly students will have the option to opt, to opt out. It won't be designed, students will be volunteering. So it would need student that requests to be a part of the equity audit committee or a team would have made a request, but certainly the parent can review that information.
Okay, fantastic. That's it.
And just as a point of clarification, Mr. James, the entire student population's not getting the surveys, the students that are on the team that have volunteered to be on the equity team for the school.
That is correct.
Thank you.
It's just middle school and high school, correct?
We haven't even determined whether it would be middle school. We'd select the appropriateness of the questions right now for high school.
Which kind of raises another question. So if it's, if it's just high school and we're looking at a team of roughly 10 total, so we're looking at maybe two to three students, what is our application process or how are we selecting who, out of the students who volunteer are interested? How do we identify who we're going to select to?
We were just talking about that. We need to develop a process and probably increase the size so we have a good representation.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yes, and the high school will have a larger representation than some of the other schools anyway.
And I don't know if it's too late in the process, but could we work with the, could we work within the process to get questions that are more appropriate for middle schoolers? I mean, I feel like if we're only asking students questions of high school, we're only capturing the high school. We're not capturing, you know what I mean? I feel like we could maybe push a little bit and say, hey, we need, we need to get some, yeah, we need to get a bigger scope of our student voice.
We could talk to MEAC and see what they have developmentally appropriate.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, the PDE has the grant to use and the permission to use the instrument. So we'll see what variations they have.
Yeah, and I appreciate the fact that it's free and I appreciate the fact that it's all approved by PDE. But I, I, I just don't want to go into it and just wind up getting a narrow scope and then not getting a true picture of what, of what people are really experiencing and students, staff, families, you know, everything.
And if we, if it's for whatever reason, the middle school students cannot participate, can we find another way that they could be engaged some other way?
I think the key, sorry to interrupt you, Gerald. I think this really should be used as a catalyst for using this information for focus groups and involving particularly our middle school and high school students. Not that our K to five students don't have a voice, but it's obviously, you know, the experience our middle school and high school students have is more involved. And so I think that's going to be, I think you had already referenced that as one of the primary catalysts that this will produce.
Thank you. Any other comment? Okay, if there's no any other comments from the board, all right, then we're joined. Thank you.